Call the June seventeen, two thousand twenty-five meeting to order. Welcome everybody here. This is the largest crowd we have had in some time. And you're always welcome here. We say that and we mean that. So I want you to know that. Uh, if you would, before we go any further, if you bow with me, we'll have a word of prayer. Our Father in Heaven, we're thankful for yet another day of life and for waking us up this morning, giving us the privilege to live on this earth and living in this community. We pray that you'll be with each one that's here tonight. Pray that you bless them and their families. We pray that you bless these public servants sitting around this table and those that have specialized jobs uh in our city government, that you'll be with them and take care of them, keep them safe. We ask now that you go with us, help us to make the right decisions for the right reasons and forgive us of our sins. Amen. All right, got a set of minutes from last time? Uh, May twenty-seven, hadn't been that long since we met, has it? Y'all okay with the minutes or do we need to make any changes?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Caleb. There's a second. Oh, did I say? Y'all have to remember that. I don't hear as good as I used to. Oh, all right, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Minutes unanimously approved. I guess I should have announced at the start, we do have a forum, we have perfect attendance tonight. So it's good to see all of y'all as well. We'll go into, we have a lot of items on our agenda tonight. So we'll go into public business and comment if anybody'd like to address us this evening before we get into our regular agenda. Now is the time to do it. Yes, ma'am. How is that?
Hello, are we signing in?
Uh, I think so.
This, I'm Deana Dowd. I'm the parade coordinator for the Fourth July Independence Day Parade this year. Please contact me. I have several applications. It's customary that they come in like two days before, but please come earlier and drop off an application there online at WatertownTN.com. You can print them out and mail them to me, or you can send them back on email, or you can drop them off at the bank, or with Ms. Vicki at Arterson Insurance, or the library. And uh, we want to get you in this parade. We've had several entries, we've got several that are paid and some that are not. We're looking at maybe getting a Peterbilt in this parade this year. They said to be announced, but boy, I hope they bring that. That'll be impressive. The parade will start at four o'clock on Fourth of July. It's gonna be starting at the Round Lake Parking Lot up here on Main Street and whatever that cross street is next to the elementary school.
New Town.
New Town Road. So uh, if you can get there at three o'clock, we'll get you lined up and get you going. I'll try and call you ahead of time so you know basically where you're gonna be. Try to get you to timed to come in so you're staggered a little bit and everybody doesn't hit at three o'clock and we have a traffic jam and I can't line you up properly. You're gonna enter from Main Street, go up the side road, New Town Road, to the back area of the parking lot at Round Lake Church. And then we'll line you up from there because they're gonna point down to Main Street from there and run you down the street right after our police and fire department, sound the alarm. So we look forward to having you. We're gonna be having a lot of vendors this year. We did have an unusual one make a request. Cotton candy may be available this Fourth of July. So I haven't heard back from them, but we may or may not have a cotton candy vendor. So thank you. Any questions?
But have you questions to Mr.? Yeah?
You're very welcome. Let's just hope I stay physically fit. By the way, I'm taking applications for a apprentice. Jim, Mr. Jim Amaro has agreed to be our.
Grand marshal.
Grand marshal this year. So God bless him. He has run this parade for years and years and he's in it this year. And we want to make sure he does not get squirted and that he has a wonderful time. Hand him off some decorations for his ride. If anybody has a fancier ride, we're taking uh offers for anybody with a really fine car or a really super truck. Uh, we'll, we'll avoid the city dump truck, although it is an option. So let me know.
Good choice, in my opinion. Done a lot for the twins the other years and been a labor of love. Anybody else? All right, we'll close the public hearing then and we'll move on. Police report, Chief, you up first tonight. I thought I saw you coming, yeah.
Oh, this is great.
Yeah.
I've got a blast.
It's not a bad night to be first, I tell you. What are we gonna do?
I'll be quick.
Oh, yeah, boy.
Okay, any questions on the stats? Group reports? Uh, one of the things I do wanna add, we had two full-timers resign. Uh, we had a, and we had another guy that we hired full-time and he resigned as well. So that's three in two days, but not indicative of this, uh, just the nature of the business, I guess. Uh, but here's what really is the detriment to all this. Been in school this week, but I've spoken with the TBI and basically they just eliminated our part-time program. So the only, we only have four full-time officers to cover all the shifts, you know. We'll get through it, but I'm just making you aware so you'll know that there's only four full-time people right now.
Why did the guys quit?
One of them said money, the other one said family and retirement. I think it was a cop-out as of.
I do too.
Because I explained to them what they'd made when they came here and, you know, some of my guys in the back don't even know, you know, what the new budget proposals are, so there's no way they would know if they were gonna get a raise or not get a raise. Uh, you know, I, I, I do think that when you have to, everybody wants all the bells and whistles, you know. It's like I met with Michael Mullins and some of the other chiefs and, you know, they're paying thirty something dollars an hour, some of them pay thirty-three. But they're having retention problems too, you know. So um, I don't take it as a negative dive on Watertown or me, it's just, it's just the way it is right now, you know.
Where, how long have these guys been with us?
Two weeks.
Oh, goodness. They knew what they were making. They had a family, I assume, two weeks ago.
Absolutely. One of them hadn't worked in three months. But he was already certified per se, and then one of them we were gonna send to the academy, but as much as I hate to say it, you know, I feel terrible because it really is a waste of resources, but sometimes that's all we got. You know, because, you know, we got one more that, he's been very upfront about him resigning soon, so, you know, and that'll leave us with three. You know, he worked, and then we got another one that said he'd worked two years and that's approaching, you know, so I mean.
So why did the TBI, when they?
So what they did was they had the thing about running NCIC, and, and actually it's an FBI program that the TBI is a party administrator user for, and then they allow us to use it under them, through them. And I'm sure there was an audit and they come back and said, hey, your part-time people can only run in-state tags. Um, and I mean, we have ten or fifteen out-of-state tags every day to get my OPRs. So they could never, basically, they couldn't pull over somebody that was from out-of-state. Uh, and if they did, they would have to wait on a full-time officer to come, but if a part-time guy's working, he's the only person, so then you'd have to wait on the sheriffs department and you create too much liability and officer safety. So I just, I don't feel comfortable working them. But this has nothing to do with us. It, it, I sent you the literature and. You know, and it's not a, not a negative mark, you know, we have one, we had three positions, but we just had one guy that filled it, but, you know, he, he won't be able to work because our whole records, our RMS, which Record Management System is based on, NCIC. So he could never even see it.
Sounds like I need to put the sheriffs department on notice that we may need some coverage and they'll do it.
Yeah, and I actually spoke with, Mike Hales, the one that called me, told me about the newsletter, which I, BJ sent it, and I mean, it's, it's right there. And I even spoke with Agent Carlita Scott, she's over it. She was nice, but she said, hey, it's the way it is.
Let me ask you this, and the people that worked on the vote talked about this. We have to do, uh, an officer has to go through a physical.
Yes, sir.
They have to go through a psychological.
Yes, sir.
We uh, provide them uniforms.
Yes.
And we provide a bond. And we do that when we hire them and then they quit after two weeks. Is there any reason we can't hire people and make them pay all that expense upfront and if they stay with us a minimum amount of time, then we'll reimburse them?
Yes, yeah, and, and me and you spoke a long time ago and I had actually asked you about, you know, if we send somebody to the academy, you know, why can't we get them to sign a year or three-year? And I think you said something about the government entering into a contract with, I, I'm not trying to get it, but I'm just saying, and in the chief's school this week, there's some chiefs there that make people sign five-year deals. Now I don't.
Well, the deal can be done, the problem becomes you gotta sue somebody to.
Yeah, and I understand that as well.
And uh, don't, even though that's the way I make my living, I'm not really in the suing business with the city. But the uh, you know, it bothers me to hire somebody and spend that money and two weeks later they say, well, I got a family.
Yeah.
Surprise, surprise. Uh, you're not paying it that way. You knew what you'd get paid the first day you took the job. So uh, I'm, I don't know that I'm gonna be for hiring anybody else without them paying that expense upfront and then say after a year or so, we'll pay them back. If they stay here a year, they'll get their money back. That's just me thinking. We'll have to talk about that.
Right.
Anything, anything else, Chief? Questions? All right, appreciate it.
All right.
Uh, Chief, yeah, you knew you were next in line, didn't you? Y'all getting this thing figured out, right?
Fine. I don't have much for you. We responded to thirty-two calls last month. Uh, over the last month, we've had about four applications of people interested and so we're in the process of getting them uh processed and onboarding and hoping to start an academy here pretty soon for those. Uh, outside of that, our fish fry is July fifth and uh, we've been reaching out to some local businesses and what we're, we'd like to do is uh, kinda have a collaboration this month in July. Have, I think we've got uh, someone bringing some produce, a local uh company and maybe some coffee or ice cream, something like that. So uh, trying to collaborate with some local businesses around and uh, help each other out and we'll see how that goes and might make it a yearly thing or uh, kinda fill it out. That's about all the news I've got for you.
Is this, um, the number seems a little bit low. Is it because we just didn't have the calls or because others are covered?
It's, it's just because we uh, didn't have the calls. Last, this, this month last year in uh, May of two thousand twenty-four, uh, we had thirty-seven and this month we had thirty-two. So it's a, a drop of five calls, so we're kinda tracking roughly where we were last year.
No calls would be good.
Yes, sir.
We talk about that often.
Yes, sir.
Any questions, Chief Hahn? Anybody? Okay, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. For Dave, there it is, front row. What happens when you get here late, ain't it?
Well, I don't mind sitting in the front. I, we haven't had any major breakages or anything, not, not anything serious to report this time, which is a good thing, so um, if you guys have anything for me.
Make any questions today? All right, thank you, Dave.
Yep.
All right, we'll go into several items of old business we got. Um, Christopher, there he is. Christopher, first on the agenda is a public hearing on the proposed annexation and plan of services on Parkson Road. So we'll go into that public hearing now, and if you would like to comment, you won't, why don't you read what?
I wanna read the.
You have to read, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm just.
No, you're fine.
I'm gonna go home eat supper.
Notice is hereby given that the mayor and the city council of the city of Watertown, Wilson County, Tennessee, will hold a public hearing at six PM or thereafter on Tuesday, June seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five, at Watertown City Hall located at eighty-six thirty Sparta Pike, Watertown, Tennessee. For the purpose of hearing, on second and final reading, the public's comments as to make recommendation to annex into the corporate boundaries of the city of Watertown and to adopt a plan of services for approximately point seven-one acres of property located on Parkson Road being part of parcel fifty-eight, Wilson County Tax Map one-ten. Also for consideration on second and final reading, resolutions to adopt building codes for commercial and residential property and to increase building permit fees. For further more complete information, um, this has been, you may contact the Wilson County Planning Office at two twenty-eight East Main Street, Lebanon, Tennessee, or Watertown City Hall. Um, this was posted in the Wilson Post on Wednesday, May twenty-eighth.
All right, now we'll ask if anybody wants to comment on this, which this is a small piece of property up on uh, Parkson Road owned by Ms. Gina and Parkson. Anybody comment? All right, we'll close the public hearing on that then and we'll present the uh, annexation ordinance first for that uh, zero-point-seventy-one acres. If we approve this, it's here tonight on second and final reading. And uh, certainly have no problem recommending it to you and the planning commission, we voted unanimously, didn't we, to recommend that?
I make a motion for us to accept that annexation.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second most.
All right, discussion around the table, anybody?
No, I did just wanna make it known that Mr. Parkerson was here last week and voiced his um, what he thought on that, said he was in support of it.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't, I haven't heard any opposition at all from anybody. All right, we ready to vote? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries unanimously. Going along with that is a plan of services. Uh, and I believe the plan of services said we'll provide what we need to within two years, is that not right? Christopher?
Yeah, we need to make that part of the motion as well.
Yeah, uh, so if, that'll be the recommendation that we approve the plan of services for a period uh, to be done within two years. So is there a motion to do that? Just a second and final reading also.
I make a motion. We provide services for, contingent upon them getting them installed within two years. I think that's.
That's right.
The way it is. They have two years to get them to extend the order, it's super correct.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, discussion around the table? All right, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that is done. Uh, we now need to have a public hearing on the adoption of codes, development regulations, and the proposed changes in the building permit fees. So is there anything you need to say or?
No, I already had read all that once, um, but when you go back in the session, I need to talk on both of them before you vote.
Okay, come on up, we can talk now. Unless you wanna talk from back there, it's up to you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, which one are you gonna be first?
Uh, I've got on here the uh, development regulations.
Okay, as far as development regulations, last month, there were two paragraphs at the very end of that resolution, um, not bringing extra copies, I don't know if they're in your agenda or not. Um, they were talking about the fire marshal inspection and how we, as the county work with that, um, have reached out to the fire marshal, um, he's willing to pick up that part of the review. He has his own fee base, so there's nothing additional that the city of Watertown or um, will have to adopt for that part because anything that goes through his office goes through his fee schedule. I mean, the county doesn't dictate that, he has his own fee schedule. Um, and he works well with our current codes department, um, on commercial and the residential side. Um, the other thing is, that was in that part, is the county currently omits um, part of the fire code. Um, the recommendation that I have from the chief building inspector and the fire marshal would be to admit that as well. I know that was a discussion that came up. There is discretion in there. Um, TCA does give the fire marshal and the building inspector the authority to require those when they are needed. Um, if you, if you adopt it the way it is, if you adopt it and put it in there, it's required outright. Um, but this kinda gives them the purview. Um, if you have any other technical questions, Daniel Broderick and Michael Cooper here from the permitting office, they'll be able to answer the, the down and dirty questions on that. I'm not familiar with what's reviewed at inspection time.
Yeah, one comment, there's another, and Chief Hahn, please, I believe you recommend, there was an option about requiring or not requiring sprinklers in multifamily buildings, townhomes and whatnot.
I, I would be in support of.
That's, I recall that you were in support of having the sprinkler systems. Is that part of the standard codes or is that part of the exceptions?
That would, that's part of the exception that is left out of this, of the county, of what we enforce in the county. Sprinklers are not a mandatory requirement in townhomes.
So. So if we want them, we need to bring that in?
Yes, sir. That would be, I'm going to have to default to Daniel or Michael on enforcing that part. You got that?
Yeah.
If, if you're not going to sprinkle multifamily homes, you've just got to have sufficient fire rating. I have to double check.
I think it's two-hour rating, if I recall.
So basically, you'll need a two-hour firewall and anything to make sure that nothing's going to spread from one unit to the next, so.
That's if you don't have the sprinklers.
If you don't have the sprinklers.
Okay.
I have to double check, I'm going to double check on that, but I believe that's the regulation on it. I look at a lot less townhomes than regular homes, so.
Well, fortunately, that's the, that's the trend, and that's where the development is going, is part of the reason I'm bringing this up.
Right, and I've, I've looked at, I've looked at both. I know, we looked at more of them when I was at City of Mount Juliet. But, and some of those have both sprinkler systems and two-hour rated firewalls. It just depends on the, on the builder, but I have to double check, but I believe that only one of the others is required.
Is there a certain number of units before it is a requirement, or is it just all or nothing?
Let me double check on that one, too. I don't believe it is. I think it's all any multifamily dwelling, just in general. And again, that's just because, you know, you've got multiple units where you don't want to fire it. And this unit spreading across everybody else is, you know, you want to be able to, at best, contain it to that unit and get that, get that unit extinguished before it causes other damage or life loss or loss of life or anything like that, so. Any other questions, or?
Michael, you got anything you need to say?
No, Dana and Chris cover all of the mortgage aside, that's what that falls under. Teammate residential, all we've governed most of that in this area, so. Y'all do about this, I'll be doing most of your inspections here, so.
Chief, you were okay on the fire marshal part of it?
Yeah.
All right, what's the pleasure of the council?
I want to make a motion that we adopt it, but that we require the two-hour firewall and the sprinkler system in multi-home structures.
Okay.
I think that's what our fire chief has recommended, and I feel that's, that's what we need for our community in terms of, like I said, we all know what's on the books and planning to be built around here. And I think we need to provide the.
Hold your motion, just, I guess I got a little bit ahead of myself. We're in a public hearing. Does anybody else wish to speak on this? All right, we'll go, now we're ready for the motion.
Again, like I said, I'd like to make a motion that we require both the two-hour firewall and the sprinkler system on the multifamily units. And the standard code has been discussed as far as single-family residents.
Okay.
Did you just say letting ops out of this?
The, the county opts out of this requirement, yes. In the resolution that's in front of the ordinance, apologies. The ordinance that is in front of you has the language that is opting out of it in there. So I mean, if you, if you're voting on that tonight, you need to make sure, and we'll clarify that, we need to make sure that you're not opting out of that section.
You give me the right one here before, before I sign it, right? You'll make the change.
Yeah, I would have to make all yours for you signing.
All right.
I'll second it.
Okay, got a motion and a second. To approve these regulations with the addition of the two-hour firewall and the sprinkler system for townhomes. And the county's fire marshal doing that job for us. Discussion, question, comments? If you've got technical questions, please ask them while these folks are here, because I know nothing about this stuff.
You'll have to have somebody amend the motion. The last thing, you need to, you need to place when this resolution is going to go for, ordinance is going to go into effect.
Okay, you want to make this effective July 1?
Yes, I thought that was our plan, all along with the.
I thought so, too.
The code's effective July 1, yes.
Christopher makes a good point there that we do that too good with that, okay? So does everybody understand the motion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That one carries. Now, the other one we have is proposed changes to the building permit fees. It's here on second and final reading. Our building permit fees here for years have been very, for lack of a better term, cheap. This brings us into line with what the county charges. And with some of the building that's going on here or will be going on here, we approved this on first reading, and I certainly have no problem recommending it to you on the second and final reading.
I make the motion.
Can we have some discussion, of course?
Yeah.
Mayor, I know you and I spoke about this. The first reading, we were accepting the county rates as the county had been. Well, Mayor, you and I have had conversations with Mayor Hutto about, I mean, we're going to have to be paying the county for coming out and doing these inspections. And we don't exactly know what that cost is going to be yet, because we don't know what the volume is going to be. So in anticipation, to make sure that we have ourselves covered to still collect a building permit and be able to pay the county, I think we need to have our rates slightly higher than what the county rates are. My thought was either an additional 25 or 30 cents per square foot, which is a little, that's, 35 cents a square foot would be 50% of what the county's doing, but I'm thinking the 30 cents a square foot, which is what we originally charged. We need to keep that in addition to the county fee so that we can pay Mayor Hutto at the end of the year for the work these inspectors are going to do.
Okay. Okay, Laura, you were, oh, well, first of all, other discussion on that. Let me say, if we do that, this will revert what we did back to tonight being a first reading, but we can do the second reading on June 30th. So we won't, we can still put it in effect July 1, or do you have to run another public notice?
No, that's fine with me. That doesn't affect anything I'm doing, because it's still a public hearing. You only have to have one public hearing, so that would work. It would just be you having it on the first reading as opposed to the second. The other thing is, based off the ordinance that Ms. April was able to dig up for me, I think the last time building codes was, or building permit fees were addressed was 1962. I want to say that fees have probably went up since then, but I don't know if it was done via ordinance.
I'm fairly certain they went up at some point in time, but I think we were probably just sitting here one night and somebody said we ought to raise them.
Okay.
And we did. So I don't have any problem with what's being proposed, but Steve, just everybody would understand if we approve it tonight and be on first reading, and I'll put it on the special call for June 30th, so we can still make it effective July 1, if that works for, for y'all, so. I'm open for a motion. I can make it, I'll recommend it.
I will make the motion. I thought we had already said that we were going to include that debate, but I think that was just him and I talking to you.
Okay, so how much are you adding to it?
Well, we'll have to make, now what we're going to have to pay Mr. Tuck though.
We won't know until we, and we're not paying Mr. Tuck though, we're paying Mr., Mr. Lawless, his department.
Right, we just got to get a formal agreement with Mr. Tuck though at some point.
And our agreement is to watch it for a year and see what comes in, and then we'll. Yeah. I included in our budget this year the same amount we paid him this current year, next year, so. So again, I need to know how much we're adding to it.
Exactly, first square foot.
What, yeah, what was the proposed increase?
I was thinking we need to have an additional 25 cents above what the county rates are that we could talk about less than that.
For residential and commercial, okay. There's, and then we can do that on the per-square-footage for residential and commercial? Like you have like flat fees, like a swimming pool is just $100. Like, do you want to make it $100 and 25 cents?
No, no, but the flat, I was only thinking about.
Square-footage crisis?
Yeah, because those are the larger structures. And most likely, any inspections that are done are going to be, I mean, that's what will be affected. I don't know of too many people, I mean, if somebody puts in a pool, big deal, where, you know.
I just need to know, because when I write up this fee sheet for you all to put on the door and notify everybody, I just want to make sure I'm getting all the numbers, whichever ones you want amended accurately.
Yeah, well, my, my thought was 25 cents on the square-footage rates for all permits.
And leave the flat rates where they are?
Leave, leave flat rates where they are.
Is that, is that a motion, Steve?
I can make that a formal motion, if that's what.
Okay, so I'm going to reiterate this, because there's a few things on here. That's going to be all commercial buildings, all single-family residential, new single-family residential. It'll affect accessory structure permits that are over 1,000 square feet. And then it'll also, it'll affect pools or decking areas that are over 1,000 square feet. So anything other than that, because pools and accessory structures are currently 10 cents per square foot or $100 minimum. If it's over 1,000 square feet, it's that 10 cents per square foot. So with that resolution, your, your commercial buildings will start at $1.15 per square foot, and they get stair stepped down. Single-family will be 95 cents per square foot. Accessories and swimming pools over 1,000 square feet would then be 35 cents per square foot. Does that make it clear as mud?
So the swimming pools went from, from 10 cents to 35?
35 cents, if they're over 1,000 square feet. If they're 1,000 square feet or less, they're just $100 flat.
Do I just keep swimming pools that we already want to change them to?
Well, I mean, you talk about the swimming pool debt.
Yeah, yeah, and swimming pools that are bigger.
Well, it's, it's a minimum of $100 now. And it was, anything over 1,000 square foot would be 10 cents.
So, yeah.
I mean, that's, I mean, I don't.
I'm, I'm good with what you.
Yeah, I, I think it'd be consistent, just keeping the extra 25 cents across the board on the square footage. Because, I mean, 1,000 square foot debt around a pool is a pretty big debt, mostly, I mean.
Well, that would include the pool area as well, yeah.
All right, we got a motion. You, the man, Chris, has got to understand it, write it out.
Yeah, I think I got it.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll make a second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, is there discussion around the table? Okay, hearing none, are you ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Carries unanimously. Thank you, guys, all of you on this annexation and development regs and the building permit fees. What we've done here tonight, in my opinion, is pretty significant and will affect this town positively, I believe. You know, we're going to have, we have people sitting in this audience that build from time to time. Good people care about their community. But we'll, we'll have more and more developers come into this community that will build stuff, make a profit, and go home. This is our opportunity to make sure they do what they need to do, or what we need them to do. So I think this is pretty significant for what we've done tonight, and I appreciate it being unanimous up. So you got anything else you want?
Not unless you've got other questions at the moment.
Anybody have any questions with Christopher or the inspection guys? Okay, thank you, appreciate it. All right, now we need to have a public hearing on the proposed increase to the water and sewer rates. So I'll open that up now, if anybody would like to comment on that. Now's the time. All right, y'all have heard me say this before. My, my theory on public hearings is if you want to speak, you better speak pretty quick, or I'm going to close it. So I'll just close that one. So we're here tonight on the ordinance, increasing the water and sewer rates for second and final reading. I hope that there's been a lot of information out there. I tried my best to get as much information out there as I could through my article and tried to explain the need for it. You know, the building permit fee is 62, the sewer line's 62, and the water line's older than that. So we're dealing with a lot of things here that perhaps should have been dealt with years ago, but nevertheless, we can't armchair quarterback. We've got to deal with it going forward. I recommended the increase to you on first reading, I recommend the increase to you on the second and final reading.
Are we going to send out anything or not?
April, what did we decide? That we were going to put on the bills going out that this contains the new water rating question? We opted for that, Caleb, rather than doing the letter and doing the postage and all that.
We have a CCR report on there, it'll do it three months, but we can, and then like that, and put that on there for this month.
Yeah, you'll just go out that one time, because we got to go back and put that report on. All right, is there a motion? Y'all going to leave me out there by myself?
One more thing. Are we going to waive the first month click fees?
I've given a lot of thought of that, to that, Caleb, I can't, I can't support that. Now, if y'all vote to do it, I'll certainly go along with it, but I think if we do that, all we're doing is encouraging people not to pay their bills on time. And frankly, we need the money to pay our debt. That's just my thinking. I hope that doesn't sound harsh, don't mean for it to, but we, I will say this, that the next year's budget for water and sewer is based on 12 months of receipts, so. You know, but if you want to make that motion, you feel, I'm not trying to talk to anybody else to make you motion. I just want you to know where I, how I'll vote, so don't be surprised.
I've got a question, and I'm not going to ask it this time, about the water, sir.
Well, we're supposed to, we just closed the public hearing, you go ahead and ask it.
Why, Paul, because I was, this is only my second time here, so I wasn't sure.
Walk up, walk up here, sir.
I just had a question, I'm sure you do, the water and sewer. I know that the schools are all feed in, they're taking water and they're feeding it in the sewer. Is this going to impact the schools as well as, like, are the schools going to get that raised?
Yes.
Cost?
Yes.
Okay, and the other question.
The high school is on county water, but their sewer rates will go up.
Their sewer rates, so they'll just pay more to get rid of it?
Yes.
Right on. And then the other question I'd asked around town, no one really did. So you talked about the, you know, the exorbitant cost of this whole process. Did the county put in any on that? Because I mean, the schools are putting in, I mean, they've got to be at least a third of the, of the waste during the school year into the, you know, the system. So is the school, or did the county put any money towards this when they are putting in a bunch of the?
Just their monthly bill.
Just their monthly bill? Okay, I was just wondering, since they're putting in a large amount, I didn't know if the county was also going to chip in on.
County doesn't even, doesn't even have a sewer system, so it'd be hard to get them to kick in on something they don't have, but.
I understand, I'm just saying because they use, they, they put in so much to it.
Yeah.
So, all right, that's, that was.
Hopefully, Paul, we answered your question. Thanks. All right, did we have a motion and second, or has anybody made it?
I'll, I'll make the motion.
All right, we got a motion to approve it on second and final reading, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, discussion around the table? Are we ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, carries unanimously. That will be effective with the bills that go out Friday or Monday. Okay, let me give you some, a report on all the projects we've got going, and I promise to be as brief as I can. Let's talk about water first. By the way, I have my. By the way, I have my, my article in the paper, I promised this month, or this edition, I'd do it on the water projects. So I have, and it should come out Thursday, I think. But let me read to you here on the water projects, what I've gotten from the architect, engineer. The water storage tank project has been bid and award was made to current construction. It is anticipated that the work on the tank will begin in August of two thousand twenty-five and last approximately forty-five days once complete the water storage tank. Will, will be returned to a light new condition. This will provide a fifteen to twenty-year service life for the storage tank. This is something that the state has gotten on to us about and that we had to get done. That's the first water project we'll be doing. I'll circle back around to the cost, so you know what it is here in a minute. The water system is preparing to issue documents for the selection of a firm to install zone meters within the distribution system to enable Watertown to more accurately monitor water flows. This will provide an enhanced leak detection system that will allow for timely identification and repair, repairs of leaks. This will enhance the capabilities of the water system and help to mitigate water loss. Ultimately, the program will help to reduce the long-term operational cost for the water system. We have been losing more water than we should for the last few years in what they call water loss. Now, some of that is things that are done without being billed, like when the fire department puts water on a fire or that type of thing. But some of this water is water we've been pumping, and it costs us money, of course, to treat it, pump it. And hopefully, that's gonna mitigate this loss. The state forced us to hire somebody to do this study, and Riot Engineering is doing that. The zone meters will be placed at select portions in town, select locations in town to try to identify where the leaks are predominant. So, and that's leaks on, on our, our, our lines. And then finally, the city is awaiting approval from TDEC, Tennessee Department of Environment Conservation, for a project to make improvements at the water treatment plant. This project will replace old equipment and improve the overall reliability of the water system. All of these projects will be covered in a grant that we received for eight hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars. The city is responsible for twenty-five percent of that, which is just a few dollars less than two hundred and twenty-five thousand of that. The rest of that will be free to us and our users. We have that money in our reserves, we've been anticipating that, so we can cover that. The new water rates, of course, will help us to replace our reserves as well as pay debts. But we have that money, so that's, no, no future water and sewer rate increases coming that I'm aware of, and I don't intend to make any. So that's an update on the water. Do y'all have any questions about that? Okay, let me go to the sewer project, if I could. We got our most recent pay request in, this was pay request number eleven. The, out of the five million four hundred nineteen thousand dollar project, they have now completed two million eight hundred and sixty-three thousand eight hundred and forty dollars of the work. And we have the money, of course, on deposit. We, we took the, the money we borrowed, put it in the local government investment pool where it's drawing some interest, not drawing near as much as interest as we'll have to pay over the life of it, of course, but it's offset some. But that's where we are on that. I am very hopeful that we are going to get Commerce Avenue back open soon. There's been some discussions with the contractor, and some of the people down there that live there have had some pretty brisk discussions with them too, I think. So I hope they've gotten the message, it's time to get that done. Street paving, we can't do anything, of course, until we get these things in the ground and repaired, but that will be a future project, as I'll remind you that we do have a million dollars waiting from the federal government to do that. That's the good news, the bad news is it's not gonna pay near everything what we need to. But we'll cross that bridge when we come to it. Finally, I do have some good news on the turntable, of course, y'all know we got the grant. We have a private donor who is kicking in three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. The county approved their budget last night, which has another three hundred thousand in it. And Mayor Hutto has written Mayor McConnell, or Connell, I guess, whatever his name is in Nashville. And since they will benefit from the turntable and running the excursion train out here, he's asked them for three hundred thousand dollars. So, at any event, we, we will have the money to do the project, whether it comes from them or from other sources. There's still some private sources out there that we can approach and will approach. So those are updates on our, on our four major projects. Do anybody have, does anybody have any questions about those? Okay, I knew, I know I ran through that pretty quick. And then you have tonight an ordinance that we need to approve on first reading. We spent some money during the year, some of our ARP money. We gave bonuses to employees, well-deserved bonuses. They kept the city going during the time when everything else was pretty much shut down. We bought some equipment, police department took advantage of getting some things that benefiting this town. We bought a new mower for the, for the parks, and we did some work for water and sewer. So you have that ordinance putting the money back in, showing it as revenue to this year's budget. It's, for those out there, one hundred and thirty-five thousand, five hundred and sixty-nine dollars and seventy-three cents in general fund, five thousand dollars in parks and recreation, and fifty thousand nine hundred and forty-seven in water and sewer. So that will bump up the revenues on the side of the reports that you have. And we'll need to adopt this on two readings tonight, be the first reading, I recommend this to you, certainly since we already spent the money.
I make a motion to approve the ordinance.
Thank you, sir.
As previously stated.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, appreciate that, any discussion? We still have some money, hadn't calculated exactly to the penny what it is, but we'll need to spend that by April two thousand twenty-six, so it will show up in the next few months. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That carries unanimously, that gets us through the old business, new business. You have a budget tonight in front of you and an appropriation resolution. Let's, let's do the thing that everybody always watches, let's do it first. And that is the property tax rate, there is no property tax increase being proposed. Property tax rate will remain as it has for several years at point six oh two seven, or basically sixty and a quarter cents for a hundred dollars of assessed value. So there should be no property tax increase on your bill until they, perhaps when they do the reappraisal. But our rate will remain the same, and it, it's obviously a part of our budget to help fund the budget, so I recommend it to you on first reading. I thought everybody wanted to make a motion, say property tax ain't going up.
I'll make a motion.
There you go, jump in.
I'll take the motion.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That passes, you'll see this again on June the thirtieth. Second of all is our ordinance to adopt the budget. Let me just make some statements here. The budget, obviously, in water and sewer depends on the water and sewer rate increase that we just did. The budget does include a dollar per hour raise for all employees beginning July one. Let me say before I go any further and thank Laura and Steve for their help on this. They were very helpful, not only in bringing some ideas to the table, but in allowing me to bounce some things off and getting their opinion on it. So this budget, while the law requires me to present it, it is a combination of, of all our work. It includes a dollar per hour raise for all employees. My goal at the start had been to try to get a dollar and a half. We can't do it right now, I don't feel comfortable right now, but I will tell you that I'm agreeable to looking at it at six months through the year. And if our revenues are holding up or coming in, we'll try to get that other fifty cent raise for the balance of the year. As I said in my letter to everyone, that's not a commitment to recommend it, but it's a commitment to take a look at it with the hope that we can. And that's pretty much, very little incremental things, things along the way, but nothing that's earth-shattering. And frankly, most of what's in there won't even affect the people that are sitting out here, so. That's the budget I'm proposing as required by state statutes that I do, and I recommend it to you on first reading.
I'd make a motion to accept it.
Okay, discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, thank you. Now I'm gonna do something else that may sound crazy, but I have to do it out of an abundance of precaution. I'm gonna recommend to you a continuing budget and tax rate for the fiscal year beginning July one on first reading. The only way this would come into effect is if we don't approve our budget on second reading on June the thirtieth, because we can't open up on the first day of July without having a budget in place. And the law does allow us to do a continuation budget, should that happen, although the consoler does not like it. If you recall, we did it last year because we had some things that we had to wait to see how they were gonna turn out. So I'm gonna recommend that to you tonight on first reading. If we approve our budget and tax rate on second reading on June thirtieth, you will not see this one again. But I need you to adopt it on first reading tonight.
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. That's approved unanimously. We talked about last time, and I don't really have a proposal for you, but I'd like to talk about it just a little bit. Somebody, I think maybe Laura, or maybe, I don't know who did, but we charge five hundred dollars for the video shoots that come through to Watertown, and we put that money in the Parks and Recreation Fund, just to have a little money for them to be able to, to do some things outside of what the ball teams do. I think we'll take a little increase in that. And if y'all think so, we'll do it, if not, it's okay too, we'll keep it at five hundred. But I think.
Didn't you say, chief, that that seems to be like a drop in the bucket for them? Or they don't really bucketize that?
Nobody's ever said that's too much.
I think I asked this, but just refresh me, when y'all are called to help in that situation, do they pay you guys too, or is part of their fee given to us helping to pay you guys?
No, no, they, we, our secretary, we would say that the mayor and the city is allowed us to use our cars because we have to have good nights. And it, it's something that requires something to be shut down, that's like a major something, and we brought before the council, have the council, but we've had several, just like an hour away on a Sunday, or just, I mean, we've had probably six or seven that didn't involve anything like that, so.
So when you're not on duty, the people that they hire are not on-duty policemen?
Oh, no, it's our guys.
So you're on duty with?
It's on the clock for the city, no, we don't allow private.
Yeah, I meant like, who's on the clock? Is it the person that's on the clock doing, so they're getting double?
No, we'd never do that.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, it's somebody that's not on the clock.
Okay, so that fee is directly going to the Parks and Recreation, none of that's having to go back to them?
It does not.
To pay their fees.
And it, we can direct it to go anywhere you want.
That's fine, as long as they're getting their money for that person that's outside of you.
So the extra police involved, if they're involved, you're invoicing directly to the video production people, and they're paying you directly in the police department?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Then I would like to address a, us increase in that. I don't have a number right off, but I think that we need to, to make a little more.
You wanna bring it back in July with a number, or you want somebody to throw a number out there?
I don't know how you would research, like, what the going rate for that is, so.
We can call Murphy's Row or anywhere else.
Yeah, just.
Coming from the business, I would recommend you charge fifteen hundred dollars or a figure.
Fifteen hundred?
Because we could kind of toss it around like a thousand-ish, but I wasn't sure.
Yeah, well, I would say at a minimum, it needs to be a thousand, but I, I would not oppose the fifteen hundred.
We have discussed several times if we had a thousand. And I went to Nashville and did something for the city with one of our vehicles that got us some exposure. It's unbelievable what they have to pay for there, and it's all by time. Like, they allow them to shut down something for thirty minutes, and in thirty, twenty-nine minutes, three officers were there like, hey, let's go. So, you know, I'm not saying we're that, because we had discussed a thousand dollars a year or two ago, and then we won't talk about it. And, you know, I'm not opposed to what he said, but, you know, a minimum that should have been a thousand, in my opinion.
And this would be per day, if it's a multi-day shoot that we do.
That is accurate. And on top of that, who they have to pay us, so that's part of the things when we do that, because it gives back to our man, and then the rate is substantially higher than what we make per hour.
Yep. Okay.
I would like for it to go up to fifteen hundred then.
Motion is to increase it to fifteen hundred per day?
Fifteen hundred per day, yes, and they still take care of our police privately?
Yes.
Yes, you, you may want to put that piece in there that, just when you make this, make sure, because, I mean, I already make sure that this is an additional insurer, that I'm hoping to have that language in the motion or whatever, but.
That takes a bite insurance?
Yeah, yes.
I, I think that's already in place.
You did that several years ago, yeah.
Yes, it is in place, but I didn't want the new motion would negate that, I'm just.
You have quoted.
Yes, so, yes, we're gonna increase the fees to fifteen hundred and make sure that they are insured and our police present, does not include, is not included in that fifteen hundred.
Okay, so second to that motion?
I'll second.
Discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye, thank you. Mr. Chris, for that?
All right, that is all the items I have tonight, and I hope you're sitting there thinking that's enough. Because I am. Let me just mention a couple of things I've mentioned two or three times. We'll, I'll call a special meeting on June the thirtieth at six o'clock. We'll hold a public hearing and then vote on the second and final tax rate. Budget appropriation ordinance and the continuing budget ordinance if necessary, and hopefully it's not. Next regular meeting will be the third Tuesday in July, July fifteenth, I believe, at six o'clock. And if that falls true, like it has so many times, it'll be on the night of the All-Star game. But so be it. And Ms. Dean has already mentioned the Fourth of July parade at four o'clock, and we will have fireworks here that night, weather permitting. That is a Friday night. We try to start them, or we do start them at nine unless we get, we've been on the chief and others to let us know if there's rain in the area or whatever. And sometimes we have had to start them like ten minutes early or whatever to get them in. And our rain date, April, is July the sixth, Sunday night? Yeah, they, they were already tied in on Saturday night, the people would do it. So our rain date would be July the sixth, and that would be, of course, after dark, after the churches are, are done with their services. So I'll go around the table, aye?
I've got a small thing. The old funeral home down there.
Yeah.
At Stevens. They're pretty long, they've placed a chain. At Stevens, uh, they're pretty almost had placed, uh, a chain fence on the city side, on the street side, sidewalk, evidently so people can't park there. They're not, you cannot walk a sidewalk in this, I think it's an ordinance sits that somewhere in there. So I would like for the, maybe the police to go by and ask them to move that, so they can be parked in there on the side of the street like it's everywhere.
Good. All right.
That's all.
You think yet?
Nope.
Steve?
I don't have anything else.
Laura?
Yeah. Oh, I couldn't say stuff, but I'm out.
No, you already have your chance. Caleb?
Did we wanna talk about the parking thing, or we just gonna let that thing go?
It's not on the agenda for tonight, so. Um, we, we wanna talk about it, but we-
I just stayed with it too much.
Yeah, I didn't know, I, you got that, sent that email. I did. So I didn't know.
You safe?
Okay. Pete?
I would not have bet any amount of money, no, no.
Yes, I really do.
Oh, okay.
I just wanna say thank you to everyone, when we have issues, I love hearing from everybody, I, I really do, because that's what we're here for, and I love getting emails, even from our community members about parking tickets or whatever, how, how I talked in here or whatever. I do enjoy hearing from our community, 'cause we serve you guys. So, thank you, that's it, I'm done.
And I feel like, if you like what we're doing, I'd love to hear it too, if you don't like it, so are. Uh, and I neglected while I go, John, is there anybody out there in TV land that's got any questions or comments or anything?
Uh, no comments, but we do have twenty-three viewers right now, we have forty-two views in total.
Well.
You're going out with a bang, this is John's last night to-
Sure, Mr. John.
-to do our, uh, our work here, and we appreciate he and the school providing us people to do this so that we can get this out, so, uh-
Do we have John's replacement yet?
He's sitting over in the corner, and I don't know his name.
I went to class, Zach ain't me, I went to class one day, and I said, John, how are we gonna replace you? And Miss Zach said, I would like to do it.
Oh.
So, thank you, Mr. Zach.
All right, all right, I'm ready for a motion, if y'all wanna make it.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, everybody get up and go home if you agree with the motion.
This is not City Council, really, but I do have a question.